It's May 10th. This is the Wareham School Committee meeting. The meeting is being broadcast by WCTV and being... An audio recording is being made by... Excuse me, but my phone seems to be playing music. I don't know where that came from.
I knew it was a celebration.
It's nice.
Yeah. I can't get it on. Oh my God, I'm so sorry. Oh my God.
Elevator music.
You need to get more creative with your music.
I'm very sorry. The phone turned on music all by itself. Very sorry. And I get no reception in here either, so I don't know where it came from. Okay. I'd like to start the meeting with a moment of silence for Michael Kennedy, a Wareham student, and Clement Spillane, a former teacher and coach in Wareham. And tonight, I have the honor of presenting with the school committee awards, recognition and service awards for Wareham staff celebrating 30 years and 20 years. And we're going to start with the high school.
Okay, I'll start off recognizing a gentleman that you've seen tonight. Mr. Nasser Mendo is the head custodian at Wareham High School. He's been in that capacity for the last 10 years. He was promoted to head custodian because of his work ethic. He takes tremendous pride in his work and is known as a hands-on custodian. Renee has saved thousands of dollars for the schools by fixing equipment that otherwise would have to be outsourced. I often ask him if he's paying for the heat in the high school because he doesn't turn it on very often. But Renee is an excellent head custodian. Unfortunately, he had a family commitment and couldn't be here. But he's very excited for me to bring that pin into him tomorrow. So thank you, Renee Nasser Mendo. I'd like to call up Christine Sinelli to the stage, please. She loves this. Christine Sinelli grew up in Wareham and attended schools in Wareham. She started at Wareham High School when she was a senior in college, completing her student teaching. She started off teaching part-time history and part-time English and then moved into a full-time English teaching position. In her capacity, she has served as assistant softball coach, ELCP site director, and worked in the summer school program. She also helped to create a very popular elective, our film studies course. She is very organized and currently holds a dean's position, which also still requires her to teach English. She does a great job of working with our senior class this year. She holds the students accountable and is a great supporter for all those students. This ironically will be her third senior class that will celebrate graduation very shortly as she has served as the dean for these folks for all four years of this senior class's tenure. And again, this will be our third senior class. So she's a veteran for graduation and all those great activities. Congratulations, Christine. I'd like to call up Cindy Sylvia. All right. Cindy actually began a career at Wareham High School covering for one of our plastics teachers. Some of you may remember that. She began full-time and technically took over for her father. We're thankful that he left Wareham for a short period of time so we could bring Cindy onboard. Thanks, Cliff. The DECA program has more than doubled in her time as department head. When she took over the department, underclassmen were not permitted to be involved in DECA. Now she has over 300 students involved in DECA, starting as early as eighth grade. Cindy has brought the business department into the 21st century. She has written grants, rebranded the school store, and has been influential in creating our culinary program. Beyond that, Cindy has been involved in coaching for more than 15 years at Wareham High School, including stints with the girls' basketball program, the girls' soccer program, and softball. In her spare time, she coaches Quincy's athletic teams. Congratulations, Cindy. I'd like to call up Lorraine Gregoire. Take your time, Lorraine. I have a long speech. We go back quite a few years together. Lorraine is a paraprofessional at Wareham High School. She transferred from Deacon's a few years ago. When she received the transfer papers, Lorraine was very nervous. She would call me weekly the summer before she would start at Wareham High School. We had two paraprofessional positions open at that point in time, and we weren't really sure of everyone's placement in their assignments at the high school. And we told her by the middle of August, we would have all this figured out. I was constantly assuring her she would be fine and the job wouldn't be that much different than what she had been doing for the previous 10 to 12 years. Ironically, that summer, she ended up having knee surgery. I told her it was going to be a while. She had knee surgery. I told her she should probably take some time off. She was having no part of that conversation. She showed up the first week in a wheelchair and worked diligently with all the students. This past year has been a little tough on Lorraine with her health issues, but I can honestly say she's never missed a beat or many school days, for that matter. She is truly one of the toughest and, at the same time, caring person I have ever met. Congratulations, Lorraine. I believe I'm now going to call up Dr. Stedman from the middle school.
Thank you for letting me speak here this evening. We are...I heard that there are some people who are able to make it and others who are not, but I still want to recognize their service to Wareham Schools nonetheless. Is Ed Baderton here? Ed? He was unable to make it. Ed has been a custodian who has worked in several buildings in Wareham. I therefore had to research some of his past experiences, and I had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Siemens, who is extremely complimentary of his time at the Minut Forest and the East Wareham School. When the school closed, he split his time between two buildings, Multi-Service Center and Deacon's. I got to know Ed a little bit at the Wareham Middle School. Beginning of the year, he's always professional, kind, and courteous with everyone that he met. We want to thank you, Ed, for your years of service in Wareham and wish you well spending time with your family and grandchildren. I'd like to recognize Elaine Johnson, please. Can Elaine Johnson come on down? Elaine Johnson is my secretary. And she's a fabulous secretary, but she's an even better person. She welcomed me when I first arrived, seven months ago, to Wareham Middle School. And everyone who knows Elaine just is so complimentary about how she treats people, how organized she is, and how much she loves her job. In speaking to one person, I completely agree. They said she is attentive to all and she is solution-driven. For me, those of you who don't know, she proofreads everything that I send out. And...uh-huh. And she's...she corrects many of my mistakes. In just a few months, she's also been able to anticipate where I might go astray, which is often, and she does everything in her power to correct me. Elaine, it has been a pleasure working with you. Congratulations on your years of service. Can I please call Valerie Johnson? Valerie Johnson is a great social studies teacher. For those of you who have not had the opportunity to watch her in action, her enthusiasm is infectious. And she has produced a number of inquiry-based projects. And you will see her spending many, many hours at school, working with her students. She is truly passionate about what she teaches. And she doesn't just teach stuff, she teaches kids. And that's really at the heart of you as a teacher, as an educator. And you've really opened up the world for our students, which we appreciate so much. And I also want to mention that she's planted many a seed in her class. And when kids want to go explore the world and travel, it's because of you, Ms. Johnson. We appreciate everything you've done for our school, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you this year. Congratulations. Ms. Jelaine Mooney. Is Ms. Mooney here? Jelaine's not...well, I still would like to speak about her. Jelaine has worked in so many different positions in the special education department as a paraprofessional. She's...takes her job so seriously, and she really works to make a connection with students. She's constantly interested in improving her practice, and she has really made connections, tremendous connections, this year in the therapeutic learning center in grades seven and eight. In a recent conversation asking her to reflect on the year, she had a great line, I'll never forget it. She leaned back, reflecting on the year, and she said, "I just love my job." Well, Ms. Mooney, we love what you give to Wareham Middle School. So can we give her, please, a big round of applause? Am I going to speak about everyone from the middle school?
Yes.
Dr. Shipp, everyone? I'd like to welcome Beth Geary down to the stage, please. Ms. Geary is going to be greatly, greatly missed by her colleagues and, more importantly, by the students. She's dedicated her career to our kids. She's an outstanding special education educator because she goes above and beyond to make connections with our kids. I got to know really the heart of Beth Geary primarily with her work in Viking Time. And yes, I observed her in the classroom and I saw the work that she did with our kids. But with her group in Viking Time, she successfully ran a canned food drive for Damien's Food Pantry, but didn't stop there. The next month, launched a toy drive for Dick Maloney's Youth Foundation and really helped our kids understand the value of service. I want you to know, Ms. Geary, you've made a profound impact on the life of our students. Thank you for everything you gave to Wareham Middle School. Sharon Burbage. I've informed Ms. Burbage was not able to join us this evening, but it's important that we spend some time talking about Sharon. She is simply a powerhouse for our special education department. And she will also be greatly missed by kids, teachers, parents, and administration. She's truly passionate about her work. Students at the middle school were always her first thought, the beginning of the day, at the end of the day, on weekends, and even during vacations. As part of the STEAM Academy, she really built an inclusive environment where every student could access that demanding curriculum. She was also a huge supporter of Nature's Classroom, and no one will ever forget her running through the halls, making sure that things are organized, efficient, and kid-centered. Sharon, we will greatly miss you, but we wish you well in your retirement. Thank you. Finally, Janice Campagnone. Janice has also been at Wareham many years, has served a variety of roles in the special education department. We are grateful for her years of service and her dedication to students of Wareham, and we wish her well in her retirement. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Conlon could not be here this evening, so I would like to recognize her for her 20 years in Wareham. I know she worked several years over at the Deacon's School. And when we reconfigured the district, she came over to Minut. So she's been at Minut now as a third-grade teacher. She did the classrooms where she taught all the subjects by herself. We took a risk this year, and she became one of three teachers in a trio. So I appreciate her willing to do that and for the dedication and the work that she does with our students. So thank you to Jennifer. The other two in attendance who I'll recognize is Leslie Reed. I don't believe Leslie's here, just making sure. Leslie retired last year after 19 years. She recently had worked in our preschool program over at the Minut Forest School. I know she's worked in various schools. Mrs. Tobin has wonderful things to say about her as well. We miss seeing her, but she still comes in to volunteer with Mrs. Reberge. You know, once you're with those kiddos, you just miss them and you always have to come back. So I appreciate the time that she's able to come in and work with us. So thank you to Leslie for her 19 years. Joan White is one of my special education teachers at Minut Forest, who also is retiring. So she's completed seven years at Minut. She's done it all from inclusion to pull-out services. She's willing to take on extra duties if we needed to, some extra testing, report writing, IEPs, working with new staff members. So I appreciate that, and I wish all of them, Leslie and Joan, good luck in their retirement. I'd like to call up Anne Marie Fillion, please. While she's walking down, Anne Marie is being recognized for her 20 years in Wareham. She's worked at several of the schools, starting over at West. She worked at East. She worked at Deacon's, at Hammond, and Minut. So she did all the elementary schools throughout her career. She was a resource room teacher. She worked in the Learning Center program. And for the past 13 years, she's been one of our preschool teachers. Anne Marie came back after child-rearing years when I was a principal for the East and the Hammond School and began in preschool. She's been a mentor to new staff members. She's been a lead teacher, which is really helping out. When I ran East and Hammond, she helped be the lead teacher so that if any issues came up, she could help the staff with that. She's been a WEA rep for 10 years. And the preschool goes through an accreditation program, NAEYC. And Anne Marie has been instrumental in all the work that we have to do to prepare for that. And we received our accreditation for another five years, and I appreciate all the work that you did for that. So thank you, Anne Marie. Tina Coughlin, please.
Tina is being recognized for 20 years in Wareham. She started in the Even Stop Program that was at the high school. She's been in preschool for 20 years as a paraprofessional at the Hammond School, the East Wareham School, and at Minut. She's the longest preschool para, so longevity is a strength for her. And she's also been with Mrs. Anne Marie Fillion for the past 13 years. So they are a great team, the dynamic duo. She's busy all day with her preschoolers, but then she does the care program after school as well. And anytime we needed to take over for the teacher if Mrs. Fillion's out of meeting, she's always willing to do that. So thank you, Tina.
Christine Ramon. Christine is being recognized for her 20 years in Wareham. She was a Title I paraprofessional her whole time. She's worked at Hammond, she's worked at Minut. She taught writing and incorporating art into it when she was over at Hammond. She also took the initiative to do a summer reading program for one of her years while she was at Hammond. She has been integrating reading, math, science, art into many lessons, including an ocean unit during four summer school sessions. She's done an after-school program called Inside/Outside Art. And during her time as a para, she's been a math intervention para. She's done reading intervention. She helps with our annual book fair. She loves to research new ideas for the staff and loves to share them. And she has done many years of lunch duty service, and she doesn't miss a day. So thank you very much, Christine, for your work. Robin Hennigan, please.
Robin is retiring after 12 years in Wareham. She previously was in Barnstable for several years, 10 and 1/2, I believe it was. She started as an interventionist, and then she became grade four here in Wareham. She also has been a technology teacher in her previous district, grade three teacher, Title I teacher. She has served on so many committees throughout the year. Anytime somebody needed something, Robin was there. She's been on many of our literacy committees, our data teams, our science committees. She's taught several professional development workshops for technology. When we had the iPad pilot, she was one of the teachers that did that with her classroom. She's been on the Global Education Committee. She participated in International Night, and she hosted tables for China, Mexico, and Japan. She worked with Angela Dunham from the Historical Society and partnered with Japanese students sending haikus back and forth. She does emails, email pen pals with Swedish students. She has worked with the Buzzes Bay Coalition doing field lessons. It's wonderful we have the Minut Forest Trail behind us, so we utilize that. And she set up a student page to save the William Minut Forest, the actual forest. She's been a PBIS member and a video performer. So go over to WCTV and you'll be able to see her on our videos. A faculty council member and a wonderful teacher and mentor. So thank you, Robin, and congratulations on your retirement and enjoy that grandbaby you have.
Joanne Spiro, please.
Joanne is my current secretary at Minut Forest. She's retiring after 26 years in the district. And the five words I hated to hear this year were, "I have something for you." And I knew that was her letter she was handing me. So right now, you can tell your son Steven that you are now on TV. She served a year at Hammond. She served five years as special education secretary, and the rest has been as an office secretary. So thinking of some of the words to describe Joanne, efficient, conscientious. Many times when we have to do our SIMs, the database for the state, I would get messages from the technology department that she was errorless, no errors in her, in her work. She's dedicated, a true professional. She plans ahead for projects. She's meticulous, organized, takes pride in her work, competent, diligent, detailed. She's adjusted to the many changes in the school configurations, the various principles that she's had in her tenure. When we moved all grade three and four and preschool came over, she took on the preschool role. And she took on the four administrators that she has to work with, and she does it with a smile. So I congratulate you on your retirement. You will be able to now enjoy your grandbabies, and you will be dearly missed at Minut Forest.
Mrs. Noonan, please.
Good evening. And the first person that we would like to recognize is Helen Baikman. Helen's presence here this evening just speaks to her dedication as a professional. Helen had a very, very recent surgery. And the fact that she's even able to make it here tonight speaks volumes about the importance that her profession is to her and her life. When I think of Helen, I think about a calm demeanor. I think about careful attention to the individual needs of her students. Helen is always a resource to others. She is a willing mentor, and she shares her knowledge and expertise with anyone who is looking to further develop themselves as a professional. I was going to speak to the binder that she recently produced. Attention to detail, down to every lesson in a file and folder to carry her classroom through the end of this school year, given that she was uncertain as to when her return might be. So that just tells you about Helen and her character and as a testimony to her students. Marie Jacinto. We are also celebrating 20 years with Marie Jacinto. When I think of Marie, I think about positive energy, a smile always on her face. Marie was doing co-teaching and multi-age grouping long before it was a model for instruction. She is a strong member of the Deacon's community. She lends a hand wherever it's needed. She's always found present at the holiday fair. She is a co-leader of the Sunshine Committee and truly goes the extra mile for the school community, for the staff, and for her students. Patty Nelson is unable to be here this evening. We would celebrate 20 years this evening with her. But she is actually still at Deacon's School tonight. She is celebrating the Mother's Day tea that has become a tradition between Mr. Roach's class and her class. And as such, she is involved with that this evening. If any of you have had the good fortune of that, you'll know her commitment to her children, to her children's family, and to sharing that and celebrating that through student work. So thank you, Patty, for your years also. Patty Bassinet. Okay. Well, Patty is our resident computer lab guru. She's able to help us with extra math, fast assessments, Lexia. She is a Title I para, but finds a home in various parts of the school. From helping students and mentoring them in the before and after-school parts of the day to helping out with recently some sight word assessments to help all kids pass a challenge and become sight word wizards, Patty's always there lending a hand. One of the most important roles that she has for us is as a member of our school council. She is very dedicated to that, has been involved with that for quite a few years, and has wonderful ideas that she presents at each of our meetings. Thank you very much, Patty, for your work. Sally Catabriga. Sally, we are also celebrating 20 years with Sally. You never know quite where you'll find Sally. She has worked in all of the various sub-separate programs, from the ASD program to the Learning Center to the therapeutic... Center to the Therapeutic Learning Center. She has worked in a number of capacities. She's always willing and flexible to do whatever is needed. With Sally, you see a genuine love for the students. You can see it in her face each day. And we thank her for supporting our children with everything from their academics to helping them open up their packages in the lunchroom. Thank you so much Sally. Jackie Koval. Jackie Koval is a kindergarten Para, well, is a Para in the ASD program who currently spends some of her day in the kindergarten classroom. She served part of her 20 years as a kindergarten Para and now is full-time. So, that was a part-time position that has gone to full-time. But she's been able to blend both of those positions because now she helps to include some of our children that are in the program for autism into a regular kindergarten day. It is a result of Jackie's efforts that they have success as learners working within an inclusion setting. Thank you Jackie for supporting all of our children. You are nurturing, you are patient, you are kind, and you are a valuable member of the DeCA's community. Our retirees. This evening we celebrate Ellen Osborne. Ellen Osborne will complete 31 years of service to the Wareham Public Schools. She has worked at East, West, Minnet, DeCA's, and the middle school. She has worked from kindergarten to grade six. She's been involved in the Global Education Committee. She's been fortunate to be able to go to Cape Verde and to spend some time in Scandinavia. She uses those experiences to enhance the lessons for our students. Her gift to children, and I truly say it's a gift, is that she shows them how to draw. And when I say draw, you would look at the work of some of our kindergarten first and second graders and put it up against what you would think would traditionally be a fifth or sixth grader at any time. It's careful attention to detail. She talks about it being a refined skill of blending color, artistic license, and really providing for them a foundation for their drawing. She also enjoys painting and does that often with our students. She contributes to the greater community by serving as a WEA negotiation team member and has done so for 20 years. She is a collaborator not only through that committee work but in all of the work that she does at our school. When we talked about what she would miss the most, she talked about the kids and the staff and those interactions, those collaboration times with everyone that she has spent so many wonderful years with. Thank you Ellen and you will be missed. And our next retiree has had a little bit of practice at it already. She has retired the end of November, so I would like to ask Barbara LeBlanc to please come. So Barbara knows what it's like to spend some time with her beautiful six-month-old grandbaby. She was with us at the Wareham Public Schools for 18 years. She spent time at DeCA's, Minnet, and at Hammond. When you talk to Barbara, she'll tell you her goal was to make kids comfortable in learning and to excite them and foster within them a sense and a love for learning. She served with us as a Special Education Para Professional primarily at the kindergarten level but sometimes working with first, second, and third graders. You knew Barbara was coming because she had her cart. And on her cart were all of her necessary supplies, from rulers and pencils and scissors and math cubes to little rewards that would motivate children along the way. You knew when Barbara was coming down to help out a group of children. Barbara had, as I looked back over some of Barbara's records, I saw things like her Marvelous Manners program, her lunchbox notes where she'd encourage families to write a note and place it in their child's lunchbox and it would be celebrated during the lunchroom time and then put up for other children to see. She practiced, she had a breakfast club where children would come and do some tutoring, do some work with her before and after school. And what I learned is that they didn't always need the help but they always wanted to spend the time with Mrs. LeBlanc. Thank you very much for all you did for children in Wareham Public Schools.
So, it gives me great pleasure to invite Pamela Hall down. I think I saw her. So Pamela Hall is a technology specialist in the Wareham Public Schools. She's been there for 20 years and is an absolute vital part of our team. I really can't say enough nice things about Pamela. It's been a pleasure working with her since I've come to Wareham Public Schools. She's been vital to the success of the technology team. She works throughout the district, particularly the elementary schools, ensuring the teachers, staff, and increasingly the students themselves are able to access technology that's now so critical to their education and learning. The technology team in Wareham Public Schools is a very special place. I've been lucky enough to attend some of their celebratory lunches which where the culinary delights come second only to the atmosphere and Pam has been a key part of that. They're hardworking, dedicated, and have such good humor. Never more so than the last few months delivering the MCAS online for the first time, which has gone really well throughout the district. And again, that's been a really key part of what Pam's helped to deliver. I have enjoyed so much the times I've had to work with her, her good nature and easy smile. And I've always enjoyed living a little bit vicariously through her, hearing about her motor biking and her skiing and her exploits outside of work. So, thank you very much Pam. So, I've not seen this Teresa Vincente Griffin. She's not here. So, Teresa is another member of our technology team who's been here for 20 years and I've really had an opportunity to work with her in the last year or so as she's been now working in central office. I've never met somebody who enjoys and takes pleasure in their work so much. She's an absolute delight to work with. She's the technology secretary in the technology team and has been a critical part of overseeing Power School, which is a student information system, of ensuring our data reporting is on time, accurate, and consistent, and is a major part of a huge technology grant that we get every year. Teresa is just an absolute joy to work with, so congratulations to Teresa.
The Wareham Transportation Department would like to honor Laura Atwood. Come on up. Laura's been a wonderful driver for the Wareham Public Schools for the past 30 years. She served as our bus driver trainer, she's been the union shop steward, and someone who's very dedicated to this town and to these kids for three decades. Even more than that, she's been an outstanding person since the time I've known her. Always willing to answer a question for a driver, give advice when needed, a friendly face we've grown accustomed to. The district has truly been blessed to have her as part of our transportation department and the district wishes you nothing but the best, as well as I do, in recognition of your 30 years.
Next, we'd like to present a plaque to Melvin Lazarus. You know, some people in their life have a job and they go to work. Then there are those people who are passionate about what they do and love where they work and the people with whom they work. And that would describe Mel, whether it was a teacher at the high school or on the school committee, he put his heart and soul in it. And Mel's moving to Las Vegas now and I know that part of his heart will always be here in Wareham. So, good luck and thank you for everything. Time for refreshments. There. At this time, we will resume the school committee meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Time to resume. And the next item is public participation. Is there anyone who'd like to participate? Anyone in the audience? We'll go on. Yes?
He said he can't.
Would anyone like to come for public participation? Come down at this time. Please. I'll try to be louder. Is that better? Great. Thank you for telling me. Okay, it looks like there is no public participation but now we have the good news. And I just wanted to ask people in the school committee first if they had any good news to share before we do the recognition of the Middle School Science Fair participants.
Thank you. Today, I was fortunate to attend the first home meet of the Unified Track Team at the high school. It's a new program. It partners students with disabilities, with students without disabilities. They practice together, compete against and with each other. It's a really great program and I'm so happy that it's at the high school. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the committee? Mary?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend because I was planning to go on Saturday but then they had the rain date of Sunday and that's the Minnet Playground. And all the members that came together, the families and staff that came together and put it, put it all together. It's amazing.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to personally thank Dr. Stedman and the whole Minnet Forest faculty. Dr. Stedman's wondering what I'm thanking him for. I've been a coach of the girls tennis team now for, I think it's 13 years. This is the first time that we've, we've had two seventh graders on this team. And I must confess that the thought of the age gap between a senior and a seventh grader is huge, number one. The, the hope that this coach would have the patience to, to deal well with seventh graders when you're so used to dealing with high schoolers was, was very much on my mind. But these two seventh graders that Dr. Stedman and his team have produced have been outstanding contributors to the, to our varsity team and today, one of them had her second consecutive three-set comeback win. So, thank you, Dr. Stedman.
Anyone else? Now, we will call down Dr. Stedman for the recognition of Middle School Science Fair Mass Regional Participants.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Doesn't seem that way. Good evening.
Press the button.
That would help. Good evening.
Oh.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here this evening. It is my pleasure. I'm going to call down, but first I should say, the other, few months ago, I believe, Mr. Swett mentioned our great science fair that we had at our building. Thanks to Ms. Jessica Scott and Mrs. Kimberly Scott who arranged the amazing science fair. And we appreciated the recognition because it is extraordinary, the number of students who participated, remarkable. We had some of our students move on to a competition at Regis College over the break and we are here this evening to recognize them. So, I would like to call down these students and I'm going to then identify the title of their project that went to Regis College. Can we please have Carlisle Beach? And he investigated the effects of video games on the body. Carlisle, you can stand right there and face the television. Michaela Semenow, looking at, is bottle water worth it? Autumn Cost and Ayla Andrews, looking at crazy bots. And Emma Akaro, saltwater versus freshwater. Come on down. They represented our middle school extremely well. They're great ambassadors. I think they had a wonderful, rewarding experience. I also wanted to mention that Emma, her project received an honorable mention and she will go on to the Regional Science Fair representing Wareham Middle School. Again, thank you for your hard work and we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Next, we'll review the minutes of the meeting of April 26th. Are there any corrections? Did everyone read it? Ready for a vote?
Remove approval.
Okay. All those in favor?
Need a second.
Oh, second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It looks like it's 5:00. Next, the requests from the class of 2018. For the senior prom and the senior class trip.
We're going to turn it over to Ms. Santos in the class offices for this presentation.
Hello, I'm Alicia Papadakis and I'm going to, I'm Alicia Papadakis and I'm going to talk about our senior prom. Oh.
I'm Hannah Edelston and I'm the class president of the twelfth class, yeah.
I'm Minnie Patel and I'm the vice president.
I'm Madison Huff and I'm the treasurer.
And I'm Sarah Gallagher and I'm the social chair.
And I'm Ms. Santos, the advisor.
I'm the prom committee head, by the way. Okay. So, we would like to, the class of 2018 would request the approval of the following date and place for our senior prom. It is May 19th, 2018 and it would be at La Barron Hills Country Club in Lakeville, Massachusetts. And the time is going to be from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. Any questions? Okay. You got a question? Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Of course. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your recognition. Could you tell me the process by which you selected this place?
Of course.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate your recognition. Could you tell me the process by which you selected this place?
Of course, we can do that.
We visited multiple... Oh, sorry. We visited multiple different locations. We had to accommodate for size. We also looked at different food options, making sure it was accommodable for everyone. We also looked at different locations, making sure it was within, you know, driving distance, making sure it was also affordable, making sure it also was with capacity, and it was also with police detail and stuff like that. So, this one realistically worked best for us.
And we liked it. Yeah. It's really pretty.
It sounds like you had, I think the educators would call that a matrix, you know? You had all... Yes. Outstanding work. Was there a close second?
No.
That was very definitive.
I think the thing you have to understand is that we don't allow for the proms to be on Friday night because of the disruption it causes to the educational process. So, it really handcuffs them a bit because these, on Saturdays, they want to have their weddings. So, they have a very difficult job of finding a location. First of all, they'll take a prom on a Saturday, and because, you know, there's no bar, obviously, for a prom as compared to a wedding. So, they have a very difficult job. I've made it very difficult for them. But in the end, I think it's better for the students, better for our school, and better for our families to be able to see these students off as they go on to the prom.
And would you like to talk about the senior class trip?
Yes.
One at a time? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm not sure. I move approval.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the class of 2018 would also like to respectfully request the approval of the following senior class trip. The date would be April vacation 2018 to Universal Studios in Orlando, Florida. So, it would be four days and three nights.
Would you like to speak?
Any questions? No.
Sounds like a fun trip. Would anyone like to speak? Then, do I have a motion to accept seniors' class, senior class trip to Orlando?
Motion for approval as long as they're really safe.
Really, really safe.
Of course. Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Don't do anything Mr. Palladino wouldn't do.
It's a great place. All those in favor? Aye. 5-0-0.
Thanks again.
Thank you, and have a great senior year.
Thank you.
Mr. Palladino, you going to stay down there for the clubs?
Yes.
Okay. Let's hear about the pilot clubs.
Yes. So, we have three pilot clubs, and what I'd like to start with is, I can start with Jamie Reed. These are, in no particular order, but I think they're all great clubs. She's going to do a presentation on the Random Acts of Kindness Club, which I know she mentioned at a previous school committee meeting, and she's been working really hard to get the petition going. And I think she has a nice little PowerPoint presentation that she's going to show you for what she has in store for us if this is approved. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, and I think we have...
Good evening. My name is Melissa Albert. I am the special education team chair at the high school. I was very honored when Jamie approached me probably about a month or two ago to see if I would be willing to volunteer as an advisor for the Random Acts of Kindness Club. The purpose of this club is just to bring positivity into the high school and, you know, try to uplift. I really think with positivity, it's a domino effect. It starts with one person, and it can carry through to the whole student body and the staff. So, Jamie has really done a lot of the legwork for this, and she's put together a very nice but brief PowerPoint presentation on what we intend to try and bring to the high school.
The password is on the paper? Is on the computer?
We don't need it. It's okay.
You don't want to show your PowerPoint?
It's okay. I think we can do it without it. So, I came up with this idea because I've always wanted to start a club at my school. So, after some browsing, I found this really great organization called the Random Acts of Kindness Foundation, and it's aimed at making students think globally and encouraging them to make their school a better place. We have a lot of clubs that focus on our community, but we don't have a lot of clubs that are 100% dedicated to the school, and I want to bring one of those to my high school. So, essentially, the organization is known in 87 countries around the world with all ages, from teenagers to the elderly. So, I think this would be a great thing to have in our school, and I respectfully asked the committee to approve our club, and if they have any questions, they can feel free to ask. At the moment, we do not have to pay a fee to join the organization, which is really cool. All we need to do is have our advisor fill out a questionnaire and an application form, and we'll just go from there. You can find that on the website. Does the committee have any questions?
Mr. Swett?
Mr. Swett?
I think I said, but I'll repeat, I love the idea.
Thank you.
From what I know about the students of Wareham, especially the high school, I think it will be extremely well-received, and more importantly, I think it will be a very, it will be a very effective club. I would greatly appreciate it if on an annual basis you might report back to see what kind of results you had, because I think they would be, my guess is they will be heartening. And this is, this is that pay it forward concept which appealed to me the moment I saw that movie many, many years ago. So, good luck with it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sorry. I don't have a question. I just want to say, good for you. Lots of people talk about doing things, so good for you for stepping up and actually doing it. So, good luck.
Thank you.
Any other thing? Any other remarks?
No, I just, I think this is a great and exciting endeavor to start. I've gotten to know a lot of the students at the high school, but this will give me a chance as a member of the faculty to meet even more and to hopefully bring a greater impact on the students, because I think today, we really need to focus on the positive with so much negativity that we see. And, you know, I think high school is very stressful for the teenagers, and to somehow uplift them, I feel like it's my duty as a staff there.
And thank you, Jamie, for bringing this club. I look forward to hearing more about it next year.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We gave the next person a little bit of a break in between presentations, but I'd like to bring up Madison Huff to talk about the NOW Program, National Organization for Women.
Good evening. As you have heard, I am looking to start a club at Wareham, just like Jamie. This past January, I was lucky enough to attend the Women's March on Washington, Washington, DC, and this really was a life-changing experience for me. And when I came back home, I realized that I really wanted to bring this experience back. They talked about not leaving the experience that day at the march. They talked about bringing it home with you and really spreading it. So, I began researching, and I came across the National Organization for Women's website. And I found out that they have high school divisions. Immediately, my mind started racing about all the possibilities that a feminist club could do in Wareham, because our school has never had a club like this before. We have GSA, but they focus on LGBTQ rights. We don't have a club devoted to just women's rights, and I feel like our school could really benefit from that. And this would give the staff and students an opportunity to learn about all the issues that NOW supports. I began petitioning around the school to see who would be interested in the club, and there seems to be a great deal of interest amongst the student body to be members. And I, I think a lot of times feminist organizations get a bad reputation because people think that only females can be involved. However, this is really not the case, and I really would like to stress this point, that males can be involved, so this would be a whole community effort in Wareham High School. The philosophy of this club would be to educate Wareham High School's staff and students about women's rights and to promote equality amongst our school, our community, and the world. If instituted, NOW will uphold this philosophy by educating the staff and students about women's rights, standing up for the issues that NOW supports, and just really trying to spread awareness amongst our community for all these issues. Any questions?
Okay. No, go ahead.
So, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. I am so excited for this. I want to join. I've been waiting like this, something like this, so long, and I want to be there to help you every step of the way, and I would love to be one of your officers next year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary?
It's an awesome idea, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you.
I think it's needed to. Thank you very much. Especially in this day and age. Mr. Swett?
I'm really concerned you're about, you're going to take my comments the wrong way. So, with that preface, while I admire your eloquence and your support for equality, equity, and perhaps many other things that you haven't mentioned, I confess that I had a negative reaction when I read through this. The source of my negative reaction was the fact that I read so often that the group of people that are at greatest risk in 2017 are, in fact, young males. And when I look and observe, even in Wareham, but outside of Wareham, I see tremendous progress, tremendous achievement by young females. In fact, in all the time that I've been observing graduations, Gold Scholars, Honor Society, you name all the areas where achievement is recognized, leadership is recognized, it's routinely seven, sometimes eight out of 10 are females. And so, when I see an organization designed to promote women, even though I have nothing against women, as they say, I get concerned that we're separating out people, and I'm much more concerned with young people in general and people's rights in general, and the 14th Amendment, which is due process, you know, for all people regardless of what classification they fall into. So, I had that negative reaction. As I said, I don't want you to take that personally. That's just me and my zillion years of living and observing and concern about divisions. I appreciate the fact that you said lots of people can be members. I'll just close by saying, I remember having a conversation with a since-retired executive director, excuse me, CEO of the YMCA, and I said, "Tell me, I said, 'Tell me about the letters.'" Because based on what I know about the YMCA, it's not just for young, it's not just for men, it's not just for Christians, so tell me about the letters. So, the fact is, the letters mattered because that's the way I identified until I had a conversation with this person, and he said, "Well, we've evolved, but this is still now." And I remember now from way back, okay, long before you were born. So, those are my concerns. I am sure that I will be outvoted, okay? And I don't want you to worry about my vote against it. It's not because I don't admire everything that you stand for.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this club?
So, moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. 4-1-0.
Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, is Tyler Lichfield, who is going to be presenting his Model UN proposal. Thank you.
So, I'd like to start this off by saying I apologize if I sound a bit froggy. I'm a bit under the weather right now, but hello, my name is Tyler Lichfield, and I'm the potential president of the WHS Model UN Club, and I'm here today to answer any questions you might have about the program and its benefits to the school. However, first, let me explain some things. Model UN is a nationally acclaimed student organization that is active in many of the surrounding schools of our area, including the Rising Tide Charter High School and the Plymouth North High School. Without any credentials, the addition of Model UN to the roster of the school's active clubs would diversify the club pool and make the school more competitive for its surrounding schools. If Wareham begins to offer Model UN, it would take its place alongside ROTC and DECA to make three nationally-recognized, prestigious, and acclaimed clubs at the school. This makes the school more attractive to potential new students, as well as offers a new possible interest for the students already in the school and that will be coming to the school in the next few years from the middle school. Model UN also offers valuable skills to its members. I got the idea from my friends at Rising Tide, who have spoken volumes not only to its educational value, but its enjoyability as well. They say it is one of the things they value the most at their school. Model UN will offer the students of Wareham a chance to practice real-life debate skills, as well as challenging themselves to learn about current affairs and others such parliament... Sorry. And argue from a position they may not agree with. It will familiarize them on Robert's Rule of Orders and other such parliamentary procedures that are invaluable to any student interested in a career in government and politics, such as myself. An important question I'm sure many of you are wondering right now is, well, what do we actually do? So, it's very similar to the real UN, where we have general assemblies, and these general assemblies will meet biweekly on Mondays. The 30 or so petitioning students have already chosen their countries they will act as delegates for, which include all of the P5 or veto members of the UN, as well as other nations such as South Africa, Italy, Egypt, and Mexico. An issue will be announced at the prior meeting, which the delegates will have two weeks to research their country's positions on, and then debate the issue from that perspective. The goal is to introduce and pass a nonviolent resolution to the issue similar to the current UN. For example, the first topic that will be debated, if we are okayed, will be on reducing tensions in Syria without violence. Staff meetings will be held on the Mondays in between general assemblies. The staff is set up with a president, vice president, secretary of treasury, internal affairs, public relations, and communication, and I have a list of who that is, what their job, email, contact information, and all that, if you need it. As far as funding goes, the club is free to enter. I'm currently coming up with some ideas for shirts, and myself and Mr. Palladino have spoken about the possibility of getting funding for pins, and I have all that pricing number down here if you guys are interested in hearing about that. To offset any of these costs, we can always come up with fundraising activities, and that can be handled by Treasury Secretary and Secretary of Public Affairs. So, my long-term goals for the future are to expand the membership, obviously, and get us to attend the Model UN conferences starting the year after my graduation. And these conferences can be anything from a small school visit, not unlike a track meet, or they can be a multi-day-long event at a hotel similar to the DECA States Competition. So, that's everything I have. Do you guys have any questions, concerns, comments? Jamie?
So, I really like your idea. Do you have any, like, spare packets with you? Because, like, I'm really interested to learn more about it.
I do not, but I can give them to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Swett, you want to speak?
So, about 100 years ago, the first effort failed called the League of Nations. The second effort, some people would say, is also a failure for a variety of reasons, although we at least haven't had a world war since then. There's something to be said for that. Will there be a security council?
That's something I'm looking forward to developing once we get everything set up and once we understand how the rules really work, and once we feel confident in the general atmosphere, then that's something I can look forward to setting up in the future.
Because I'd be very interested to hear how perhaps you evolved the UN in your particular example from the current UN, and perhaps do it even better than they're doing it now. But I love the idea. I think it will be academically and intellectually stimulated. But I love the idea, I think it will be academically and intellectually stimulating, and I totally approve.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak? I worked in a middle school for years, and we had a UN club, like a Model UN. The description you have in here is kind of how it ran, and they also visited the UN at the end of every year, eighth graders could go. Do you have any plans to do anything like that?
Oh, I'd love to. I looked it up, when I was researching this, I saw that that was an opportunity. I don't think that we can, I don't think I'll have, like, the ability to set that up during my time here, but I'd love to have that as one of my long-term goals, to get set up for the seniors after my graduation, also like the competition and conferences.
I think it's great that young people learn how the government works, how the UN, the world type of government works, just so that you could be involved, and maybe things need to be better, and maybe you would come up with ideas in your adult life to make, you know, make something good even better. So I applaud this club.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the club?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for letting us be here this evening. We are here to ask your permission to make a Safe Schools Alliance, otherwise known as a Gay-Straight Alliance Pilot Club for next year at the Wareham Middle School. This conversation about establishing a pilot club began many months ago, when a student, an eighth-grade student responded to an assignment in Mrs. Bliss's class. The assignment was called the Social Action Plan, and the assignment asked students to create a project that would create meaningful and lasting change in the world. Makia Smith had an idea to follow the lead of the high school, and as mentioned already this evening, the high school has a GSA/Safe Schools Alliance Club, and she wanted to follow their lead and create a Safe Schools Alliance Club at the middle school. As I said, the high school already has such a club. Their mission is, a Safe Schools Alliance at Wareham High School is a student-run group that meets regularly to discuss topics within the LGBTQ and straight community. This club brings together LGBTQ and straight students to support each other and provide a safe place to socialize. The GSA/Safe Schools Alliance meetings run every other week, and all students and staff are welcome to attend these meetings. We are an inclusive community, and we'd like to support students who are pursuing this. I'm joined by two of those students today. I'm here with Andy Sandoval, eighth-grade student, and Genevieve Phillips, another eighth-grade student, who is part of the initial proposal with Makia Smith. I'm also joined by seventh and eighth-grade guidance counselor, Melissa Hokinson, who was involved in exploring whether this would be a viable option for our school. She went to a training and is here this evening to support the students. I would like Andy Sandoval to explain his rationale for establishing this pilot club at our school.
Hi, I'm Andrew Sandoval, eighth-grade student. We wanted to do an exploration into something that could become an official club next year, something that could provide a safe place for students, safe space for students at WMS. We want to raise awareness about bullying, and by that, we want to use posters, perhaps tell others, and use social media even. We feel already like we've accomplished something in doing this, providing a place for people to relate with others and feel safe in an environment where they won't be harassed verbally or physically. The future is a little more complicated. We want to make this an official thing for next year. We have to find one or two people to run it next year and provide officers and work with the high school. We want to think of what we, as a community, could do next year. We've had some exploratory meetings, and we believe there is interest in the building to make this an official club. And this year, we went to a training in Easton on how we could run this type of club in school. Any questions? Go ahead.
I just want to say congratulations, and I pledge my full support to your pilot club. I hope it gets approved, and you're doing great things, continue to do them, because it'll get you far.
Thank you.
Genevieve, do you want to join?
Yes. They have questions.
Mr. Swett?
So, while government does a lot of things, its primary purpose, if you literally started with number one, is security. It's the only reason people gave up the freedom that they do give up to join a community is to get security. Then when you take that portion of the community and you call it a school, that importance of security, the importance of a school being a safe place, is raised another order of magnitude. Every parent, certainly I can guarantee you, every school committee member wants to believe that a school is a safe place, and we would do anything to make sure that it was a safe place. So when I see two wonderful, eloquent students in front of me wanting to establish a club to create a safe space, it just drives me crazy. Because what it's saying to me is that the general school isn't safe enough. So convince me that I'm wrong.
Well, we didn't mean it like that. We kind of meant that for certain people who feel less than by other people, whether it's the clothes they wear, if it's like expensive, and if they have a lot more friends than that person does, then being in this club, they'll have other people who are like that too, who they can relate to. Yeah.
I, I hear you, and I believe you, and it still disturbs me that we haven't met your needs well enough. So my comments do not reflect on you. I'm feeling, sitting here feeling guilty that you feel the need to create this club. That's what I'm sitting here and feeling.
Mr. Swett, can I?
I would never stop you from speaking. It's the chair's responsibility, anyway.
Ma'am?
Yes, I know Ms. Morgan wants to speak too, but why don't you go first?
That's okay, you can go first, maybe you'll say what I was gonna say.
One thing that I would say about the middle school, the fact that you have Andy and Genevieve and a number of students who expressed interest, the way I view it, I think, actually the opposite, Mr. Swett, I believe that we've created an environment where students feel empowered to create an environment where students can come together. Because if they didn't feel that way, they would never have launched this project. And starting in 1993, the governor asked all schools to establish these clubs to create a safe environment, recognizing that sometimes these students are the most at risk. So I view it a different way. I see the fact that we have created a climate here of inclusivity and positivity where we have students here who are willing to take a risk. I mean, let's be honest, to take a risk here, to come to you this evening and to say that they want to create this special place.
Also very eloquent. But one of the ships of the high school, maybe a ship of the middle school, is respect. And what I'm hearing is that not all students are respectful enough of other students and their differences, their, you said their dress, whatever it is, it's not respectful. So I hear you, I would never vote against you because, because it may in fact create a safer place, and I want you to feel as safe as possible in your school. But I'm still sitting here saddened that you feel the necessity to do this, but admire your initiative.
Okay.
I don't know, I look at it in a different light as well. I look at it as more of like a support type of club. Even, and you look at all the other clubs that you have too, is, it's people coming together that have a common interest, and they build on that interest, and in this case, you would be building on awareness as well. And the other point I want to bring out, and it sort of goes back to the Women's Club as well, which I'm going to have to say on a side note that my son is part of one, and I'm very proud of him for that, that it's reality. I mean, even in the workforce. And I award you for coming up with this club, and I think it's really needed, especially at the middle school age.
Thank you.
Yes?
Hi.
All right.
As a mother of a seventh-grade student, who I know would be ecstatic to be included in a program like this, I just want to thank you for taking the initiative to do all the hard work for this.
So again, we are asking that this be a pilot club for next year, please.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this club?
Yes, please.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can't tell the difference between their voices, and they both speak softly, so I'm just guessing. Who's second?
Oh, I second. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I would like to say one more thing about a club before we just leave, because I've been thinking about the National Organization for Women Club. That's when I came of age, when this organization was started, and just, it did so much for my life and the other women who are my age, who were my age at that time. And what we learned, and what we passed on to our daughters, and what I hope is still being passed on now, is that, yes, we can be anything, because before that, we couldn't be. Things were so different. And we still didn't improve in all, we still have not improved in all the areas in which we need to become equal. And another place that we still have to improve is that glass ceiling. Women are not paid as much as men. There hasn't been a woman president. There's still a lot to accomplish, and I'd hate to go back. Now I'd like to look at the young men, and I feel for them. About fifteen years ago, a superintendent came to me, because a superintendent's prerogative in the contract said they could assign other duties to an administrator. And he said, "Judy, will you look into why the boys have fallen behind in school?" It's a real phenomenon. Like Mr. Swett said, that the girls have just excelled, and it seems like the boys in school. Now, we're not talking men, we're talking at the stage when they're schoolchildren. And one of the things I found out when I was looking into this, and I had remembered studying it, is that boys just, brains are still not developed at that age. Girls' brains are much more evolved. This is a scientific, physiological fact, that the frontal lobe, right here, has not developed in the male, and therefore, the young male. And sometimes, they were saying it would be nineteen years old it would happen. Now it's up to their saying with this brain research, twenty-four years old, twenty-five years old. So there was a reason, a reason, because this frontal lobe that has not fully developed is the one that helps you concentrate and not be so impulsive. And think, think of boys, the way they can act at school, not to stereotype, scientific fact that they don't, can't just sit there like the girls, and that affects your organization too, just not as organized as the girls. So once these girls were given more of an equal opportunity, told, "Yes, you can be anything, you can do anything, yes, you are good in math, yes, take those algebra courses, yes, push yourself, yes, you are going to college, yes, you're told this, you learn this," that's why the girls could do it. So that is the reason that that happens to young boys, it is physiological, and the girls, the girls can just do more, and the doors opened for these females. But then when you get out in the real world, and it gets later in life, there's still a lot of inequality. So one other thing I'd like to say about the boys, I have a friend who started Men's Rights, and there are some Men's Rights groups, and this goes back years, and, and, and women are in his group, and men are in the National Organization for Women. You know, we all have issues, and we all have, need to make other people aware, so that we can all evolve to be the best that we can be. And someone just made a movie of this friend, a documentary, a feminist, and she thought it was going to come out another way, and it didn't. She saw that, that it, what, Men's Rights also had value, you know, what was being said. So that's all, that's my two cents too. And I guess we can move on to the next agenda item. Thank you.
Dropout report.
So I know we're running a bit behind, so I'll try not to bore you with too much data, but I did feel a pleasure to try and send you some of the data that we use year in and year out in regards to dropout rates and tracking, and I'm excited to be next to Ms. Vondoulis, because she's a big part of maintaining a low dropout rate for our demographics, and the night school program, also called PM2, has been instrumental in us getting students to stay in school or reengage, and so it's been a great partnership, and certainly, you know, these numbers would be much higher for the high school, if not for her program and the work that her staff does. So I know we're going to kind of go back and forth, and I might steal a little thunder on that grant, but I'll try to, I'll try to stay off the grant. But I just want to talk about kind of procedure, and again, I'll try not to bore you with numbers, but I will refer to those. But, you know, we try to do whatever we can to prevent dropouts. Obviously, you know, we don't want students to drop out. We know what the data says in regards to income down the road, upward mobility potential for future employment, things of that nature, and we do have a nice spiel that we give. But obviously, we also don't want them to be a burden to society as well. So we do have, I think, a great program that we utilize, and I just want to kind of talk about what we do in regards to if a student is at that stage where they're debating whether to drop out or not. The first thing that we try to do is utilize our guidance councils. We have some great guidance councils at the high school, and they would meet with the guidance council first if the student is at that point. They're also required, before they can sign out, to meet with the parents, with the principal and assistant principal. I try to delegate that to my assistant principal. She has a great story, and I know she doesn't mind me sharing, but she did drop out at one point in time and became reengaged, and she shares that with the students. And it's a tremendous opportunity for the students to kind of think about that and to, and to kind of recalculate where they're at, and she does an awesome, awesome job with that and talks about, you know, kind of what she had to go through. And if that doesn't work, we would then hand out the paperwork to the students in regards to other options, because there are also other pathways, such as our PM2 program, and there are even other pathways that I handed to you in regards to other opportunities. It doesn't, you know, our feeling is, it doesn't necessarily have to be in Wareham that they go to Wareham. Obviously, it's more convenient, but there are other programs, such as Middleboro and Bedford, and then there's also the HICE, which we used to call the GED back a few years ago, that is still an opportunity for them to get a piece of paper to work on that. So we're very proactive. Even before these conversations occur, we meet weekly with the deans, we track attendance issues every week, we track discipline issues, students. We have an awesome student support council. As a matter of fact, we met this afternoon on our grade-nine students. We meet every other week, grade-nine, one week, and then two weeks later, we'll meet with the grade-10 through 12 students that are struggling. We use the state's early warning indicator system at the beginning of the We use the state's early warning indicator system at the beginning of the year. We also use a list of students that may be repeating grades. And then, as we get into the terms, we look at students that may be failing multiple classes. I won't steal the thunder on the grant, but we have, with Jane and her staff, a great grant. And I'm going to let her talk about that. But it's been a great, I don't know, few months now, and I can't wait for next year to keep this thing going. But I'm not going to steal her thunder. But that's been tremendous at increasing the communication between home and school. And she'll talk about that. And for the underclassmen under the age of sixteen, if we have to with students that are attendance issues, are habitual school offenders, it's a very small percent. But we have utilized the courts. They have, used to be a CHINS petition, it's now called the CRA. We file those on Wednesdays if needed. It's a child requiring assistance, and we utilize the Fourth District Court. We also constantly talk with other schools to see what they're doing. Because this isn't unique to Wareham, I can assure you. And we find out, you know, what other schools are trying to do. And sometimes, we may steal from the other schools, and obviously, they're willing to share it. In regards to if all this doesn't work, they've, and sometimes, we can't even get them in to go through the process of meeting with the guidance council, meeting with the principal or assistant principal, we'll first of all mail them out all this paperwork. We have a letter, which I know you saw, which would have been the first letter. We had three letters that we shared with you. The first letter would be kind of the kid that just didn't come back for the senior year. And we would follow up with that letter. Our deans would be tracking those students. They are assigned to students in their class, they track those students, they stay with them. In June, we call. We send them information on summer school and on the PM2 program. The beautiful thing is, we have the flyers sometime in June for the PM2 in the fall, and we send those out. We follow that up just before their registration dates to try and get the kids, and we try and get them engaged. If that doesn't work, we still stay on them. And in December, we'll follow that up with a mailing, the letter again, and phone calls. So, I think we have a decent process. We continue to follow up, again, all the way up as long as we can to try and get them reengaged. It's not unusual for a student to come back a couple of years after they've been disengaged. So unfortunately, it doesn't count towards our graduation rate and our dropout rate. But we feel it's our obligation to not quit on these kids. Because sometimes, these students have things that even, we may not be aware of going on in their life. And all of a sudden, things can kind of clear up at the age of nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And it's not unusual for kids to be in their twenties to finishing their high school diploma. And, or going for the HICE, again, former GED. So I have some data. I think what you saw is that, you know, we have been improving in our dropout rate. You saw the data, and it has improved pretty much, well, compared to last year. Last year was a tough year, but it has been improving. And this year, it's, our data is some of the best we've had in regards to dropout rate. So certainly, I don't want to totally bore you with the numbers. But you see the, we gave you the graduation dropout rate, the adjusted dropout rate. And the thing that's difficult, we do have a percentage of students that kind of, a transient population, a small percentage, but it is a percentage. And what happens is, if they move out of state, they're considered a dropout. If they go to a private school, they're a dropout, as far as the state's concerned. If they're in our, if they're in school till they're twenty-two and they don't receive a diploma, they're considered a dropout. So we get kind of hit on three different levels. But I'm really excited, if you saw in the 2006, the non-grad completers, it was a point eight. And I'm really excited to report back that we had a student that didn't graduate on time. And the non-graduate completer would be a student that met all the local criteria, but just didn't pass the MCAS. And most recently, he passed the MCAS, and we had an awesome celebration last week, which was really the highlight of last week, trust me, on that. And it was awesome to have him come back and get his diploma. So it was a fun day, and he was the only student that didn't pass the MCAS. Transferred in late, and we were really excited for him to get that diploma. So I'd be happy to go over the data if you want more details. But I certainly don't want to take all of our time, because I know Ms. Von Dules wants to present as well. So I don't know if you want me to pause and take questions, or turn it over to Jane. Because it is, the grant is an integral part of, I think, our whole process, as is night school.
I just have a quick question, but if Jane can answer it, then don't answer it till then. I just wanted to know, I can see all the work that goes into tracking and everything that you have put in place. So you do so much. But what, I feel bad for those students that you can't find, or you don't reach, or the parents never responded in spite of everything you've done. What percentage do you think that is of the students that you're trying to, you know, reach?
Well, it's a percentage. It's usually maybe three or four students a year that we're trying to locate. And a lot of times, it's mom lives in Rhode Island, dad lives in Wareham, or vice versa. And again, it's tough, because the state doesn't give us credit if the student transfers to another state. So it's difficult. But it is a percentage of students. Certainly would welcome any advice, because I'm not saying it's perfect, obviously, it's not. But, you know, I will say the deans, the guidance councils, assistant principal, myself, we work really hard at this. And, you know, it's, and it's not really just that it's seasonal. It's just that that's a great opportunity for us to continue to have the conversation when there's kind of that open enrollment period with our night school program. It's a small percentage, but, you know, we've also increased the rigor and the requirements to graduate from Wareham High School. So we have to be cognizant of that. There's no other school that has the requirements that we have in this area, south of Boston as well. So, you know, one hundred and thirty credits is high, and the requirements that we have, you know, and I won't go through those, you've heard that presentation before.
We understand, yes, that we have that. Mary, sorry.
Can you just clarify, so you're saying that a student that goes to a private school does not have a SACID number?
The state doesn't identify that. Once they go into a private school, the SACID is the state-assigned student ID.
Right.
It has nothing to do with private schools. Private schools are privately funded, so they don't track. Once they're not in a school that's funded by the state, they don't track those students.
Okay. Then my other question was about, do you have, would you be able to break it down to show the percentage that are special ed?
Um, I believe-
Is it, Mary, or I missed it?
If the cohort is large enough, and I have some data on that, I'd be glad to share. But just to be clear, if I can just, on that, on that private school, it happens occasionally, but I don't want you to think like that's the large group. It happens on occasion that we lose a student to private school.
No, I didn't think it was.
So in regards to, there has to be in the class a minimum number for them to be able to identify the special ed students. And I believe it's twenty-five, but please don't quote me on that. I may be able to find that as Jane is talking. I'll see what I can find. But I know that they, there has to be a cohort number for them to be able to identify those. And I believe it's twenty or twenty-five, I'm not sure on the exact number.
Okay. And just one last comment on, like you said, the rigor has, you know, increased here in Wareham High School, which is great. So it goes back to my early childhood years, and I'm still in early childhood. But the importance of reaching and giving them the intervention, because if they don't get it, they just fall further and further behind. And then they get to high school, and many of them end up dropping out.
Right. And I know, in speaking with my colleagues at the other schools, there is concerted effort to work on that. And I think at some point, you'll hear from some of them, and maybe even the curriculum director, in regards to some data that they have. They are working on that, they're cognizant of it. And I think in the future, we'll probably be in a different place in regards to the level the students come in at in ninth grade.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
So personally, as a high school student, whenever I hear about a student in our school dropping out, it makes me feel very disheartened and very saddened that they have decided not to continue their journey with us. Although nobody in my class, to my knowledge, has dropped out, I've seen kids in classes above me over the years drop out. Kids who I would sit next to in class or have gym class with. And I'd come to school one day, and they would be gone. And some of these kids I've never heard from again. And it makes me wonder, what could I have done? I didn't know that they were at this point of wanting to drop out of high school. And it makes me wonder, what can we do more of to make sure that these kids stay? Because they are valuable, and they can do it, and they're capable of doing it. But they just need the support to get through, and they need to push themselves through it. It's difficult. It's difficult in high school. You have to balance grades, clubs, activities, friends, family. It can get really hectic, but you just have to push through it and have mental toughness while you do it.
I agree.
And that's a nice segue into what the Office of Beyond School Time is trying to do to support the families and these at-risk students. So I came to Scott and Debbie a while back when the 320 Mass grad Promising Grant came out. And we had a long discussion on the focus that we would try to do with these grant monies. So we put a proposal together. We were awarded the grant at Thanksgiving time. And we decided that we were going to take the path of adult advocates for these students. So we were able to hire two social workers to work fifteen hours a week, each of them, during the day. So this is the first grant that we've had, that we actually have put into place a day school program. The social workers worked closely with Scott and Debbie and the guidance to look at what students that they were going to target. And there were forty-one students that were at high risk. So over the course of, what, two and a half, three months? Because they didn't start until February. They have done twenty-three home visits. And they have a log, and they meet with the families, and they meet with the students. Out of the forty-one students, as of today, twenty-four are in line to be promoted to the next grade. That they have been able to, credit recovery, make up work. The social workers are in touch with the teachers, the guidance, the families. They follow up with emails. So, and they're still currently working for the seventeen others that they're trying to get over that hump. Maybe it'll be summer school, fifth quarter. They'll take some online courses through our evening program during the summer. But I think it speaks to such a good success in such a short amount of time. And what our hope is going forward is that we are going to begin this program, if we can keep the funding, and think outside the box in leveraging resources. But we will start in the fall. And we will continue with that cohort. And then, the intent this summer is to bring on a new cohort of eighth-grade at-risk students transitioning to ninth grade. We were allowed to apply for some additional summer funds. We're waiting to hear if we received it. Right now, we can actually give them a summer program to twelve of those eighth graders. But if we receive this extra funding, we can actually increase that up to thirty, eighth grade rising to ninth grade. We will, it's a six-week program, but we're going to do the home visits over that summer, start setting goals, counseling. And then, when they transition to the freshman year, our social workers that will be paid for through these grants will continue with those two cohorts. We also have the team pregnancy, team parenting group. So we give those parents the support, the resources, and to stay in school. And then, we also, with the night school, currently, we have thirty-seven full-time residents that are enrolled, and we have thirteen full-time non-residents enrolled. And the graduation is set for May thirty-first. And currently, we have twenty-six students who will be graduating out of the evening school.
I want to go to the graduation.
So if you have any questions, and I also have Joe Marcus up here. He is the coordinator of our Evening School Pass program. So if you have any questions.
And I believe you have a flyer on that I sent you as well.
And that's where I have questions. Just clarification, looks like it's different than what the PM2 school was. Because it says that now you can get, your diploma is from Wareham, oh, I'm sorry, public schools. I was thinking it said high school, that's me not reading it correctly. But the requirements are the same as the high school now? Because I don't think they were in the past.
Credit-wise?
Yeah.
The requirements are the same as it was for PM2?
Okay. All right. That's, I just wanted clarification on that. Oh, in the, it says that full-time residents, it's free for, so is that the same? And it's also for full-time for the ones that come in from out of town? And we get, is that school choice?
School choice.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm reading a book, and one of the people quoted in this education book was the, is the person who founded PISA, the International Testing. And apparently, he makes a presentation routinely, and the last slide of his presentation is a rolling sentence, and it says, "A person without data is just another person with an opinion." So when I look at the last decade of data with regard to dropout rates in Wareham, notwithstanding the constructive comments you've made this evening about the most recent experiences as compared to data, it's just gotten worse. Dramatically worse. And the comparative data with respect to the state is shockingly bad. Now, I don't sit here with a hundred percent faith in DESI data, or DESI in general. But that's what I got to work with. That's what I get to look at. And it is really troubling. Because all of the things that you articulated that create problems for you, that create dropouts, that may be unfair with respect to how it's calculated even, all those things apply to every other community. So I can't look at the numbers and say, well, there's something unique about Wareham because of all the reasons you just said. Because all those communities that are much worse in terms of academic results, but they're better in terms of dropout rates. So I have to be troubled by it.
I think what you have to decide is, do you, and I preface this by saying, they do a wonderful job. I think you need to break it down, first of all, it's district data that you're looking at. And I think you need to make a decision. Do you want an alternative school in your town? Because the nature of these students, okay, the nature of these students are, you know, you're recapturing students that are already dropouts. So now, you enroll them, now they're dropouts in your district, they're at risk. So if you want to clean up the dropout rate, you could, if you close down the school, I'm confident that would, but that would be a disservice to our students.
But wait a minute, and I agree with you, that would be a disservice. But wait a minute, this is a cumulative data that includes the alternative, right?
Correct.
But every other district, especially major cities, they, it's cumulative data, is it not?
It's cumulative data, and-
They don't disaggregate when they produce the number, correct?
They may outsource versus insource some of these alternative programs. I mean, I can't speak, I don't know any of the cities. But I will say, we have a large transient population, and we have an alternative school. And that's two of you, when we're tracking this data and looking at the students that are dropouts, that's an issue. But again, I think if you break it down by school, because people look at it and just look at it at district level. But I can't speak to whether these schools, there's going to be an alternative school in Plymouth. So now, all these area schools can send their kids that are struggling to that school, and now it's their dropout versus what's, and what's happening now is, we get, and I don't want to speak for Jane, but, you know, we get students from Warren, Falmouth, Plymouth, Cava, Middleborough, or Rochester that go to the night school program. And if they don't make it, that's, they're now our dropouts.
I get that. But I'm sure that's not absolutely unique to Wareham. I'm sure there are other cities and towns that have that same issue. And they're still not generating the kind of negative data with respect to dropouts that Wareham is.
But I think they have a larger enrollment when you look at their numbers.
I'm telling you-
There's some offset there. I looked at Brockton, I looked at Fall River, and I looked at one other city. And the numbers, they can absorb some of these numbers. The numbers, when you look at the actual number, are as large, sometimes a little bit less, sometimes a little bit more than our actual numbers.
You mean the absolute numbers?
The absolute numbers.
But we're talking percentage.
Correct.
Right? You have to talk percentage.
Gotcha.
So it's really troubling. So you've heard all my concerns.
Break it down by school is my recommendation, and then you can see-
I can't do that, because nobody else is doing that when they're producing the data. But let me finish.
Yes.
Nevertheless, I love what I'm hearing from Mrs. Von Dules, okay? It troubles me that we have to have a grant that's doing something so constructive, okay? It troubles me that we can't afford to do it ourselves. But nevertheless, we're doing it. Because if the data that you're talking about, twenty-seven or twenty-four out of forty-one, I guess were the numbers, okay? If you really can impact that percentage of kids at risk, that's going to take the data, and it'll plummet as a result of that. So I am thrilled to hear that you're having that kind of- So I am, I am thrilled to hear that you're having that kind of impact.
And it's the home visits, that's the key, too.
You know better than I do what's gonna work. I don't, I don't sit here pretending to know how to have the impact. I'm just thrilled that we're doing something, that it appears to be constructive, and that we can look forward to it. The only question I would have is, how good do you think you and the rest of the team that's part of this is at identifying the kids that are at risk? In other words, if, is there a 42nd kid out there, or maybe 10 kids from 52 to, 42 to 51, right, that will surprise you and drop out, and you never thought they would do it? Because I can tell you, as recently as today, I heard the kids on my tennis team talking about friends of theirs that are dropping out. So it's, they, the students really do recognize how stupid it is, how unfortunate it is, but as Mr. Palladino knows, I only get great kids on the tennis team. But yes, I'm incredibly lucky in that respect. So my question is, do you think the process of identifying kids at risk is a really good one?
Yeah, I think Devin Scott and their council actually came up with, there's 76 students. But because we couldn't start the program until February, they looked at the data, and they targeted these 41. Now, if we could start at the beginning of a school year and have these social workers doing home visits, along with the other people that are doing home visits, there are four high school staff members that are part of this team, that they're going out and doing home visits as well. So if we can expand that next year, and they're working longer, they can see more kids, then there would be more than 41 being...
So, there's 76 that have actually been identified.
So we, first of all, I just want to preface, we've got a school full of great kids, and you just happen to have a percentage of them on your tennis team. I just want to preface that.
I know we have good kids.
All right. Because we do, we truly do. We're very blessed. But, so what we did was, we kind of put them in order of who needed the most amount of help, and we tried to be realistic, because we're starting this, we received the grant more than midway through the school year. So we identified the ones that are at the highest risk for dropout. The state has identified them, and then obviously, we have an identification process as well. So the state has the early warning indicator system, which identifies them based on a bunch of categories. I won't bore you with those. And then we also look at students that have been retained, students that maybe weren't retained, but also had a few failing classes. So we identified this pool of students and put them in order of priority. Now, what I'm excited about, and I've been saying, Jane's probably sick of me saying this, I can't wait till next year, because we have really done some wonderful things, and we've got a wonderful group of people working with us under the direction of Jane and the Beyond School Time program. But when you meet, when you hear, I get a chance, I think you do as well, to read the reports from the home visits. And when they come back, you know, the stories they tell and the information they've been able to receive, you know, we kind of can kind of figure, put the pieces together as to where we need to move, you know, to try and get this thing going forward. But the most important piece is, we've bridged that communication gap. We've had that collaboration with the family and these workers, and it's, obviously, the data speaks for itself. I just can't wait to see when we can hit this from day one, where maybe the identified pool may not be 70-something strong. We might only be looking at starting off with the students that repeat. So we start small, and then as we have these success stories, all we're doing is monitoring those students, and then we're moving on to the other students. So I think, as long as we maintain this grant, I think we're gonna see, I think we'll be able to report back to you, probably that we've been able to double, if not triple our numbers when we have a full year under our belt.
Well, as the person who requested your being here tonight, first of all, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Second of all, thank you to the superintendent for arranging this. But I would love to have more than just an Excel spreadsheet. I'd love to have you back on an annual basis to talk about this, because it's, to me, it's one of the most important things we need to do in this district. So, Madam Superintendent, if you might do that on an annual basis, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Just one more comment, going back to the home visits, because I actually do home visits, that it's too bad they don't have a grant out there for the younger grades, because that's where we really need to catch them, you know? And the home visits are key.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have executive session minutes to be released. Is there a motion that goes with that, or just announced that they're released? And now it's the superintendent's report.
You have to say what they are to know.
Oh, the minutes are...
It's in your newsletter.
It's in my newsletter, okay. I am releasing the October 19th, 2016, executive session minutes.
I have payroll for the week ending April 29th, 2017, in the amount of $148,455.90. And payroll on May 6th, 2017, in the amount of $838,945.16. I'd be asking for a motion of approval for the payroll.
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, the bill warrant for the week ending May 11th, in the amount of $223,035.55. And in the week ending on May 18th, in the amount of $285,870.39. I would be asking for approval.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Thank you. And then I have announcement, the Summer Food Service Grant. Wareham was awarded a grant of $9,058 from the Office of Food and Nutrition in the Commonwealth. This is for expansion, access, training, and startup of its summer food service program. These funds will be used to increase the number of free nutritious meals served to children during the summer vacation. And what I would say is that our summer, actually, our meal program is expanding constantly. We're looking for different spots to set up for meal distribution in the summer. We've even selected two more spots than last year, so we fully expect to include additional students in this worthy program. As well, quite exciting, during the summer practice, when our fall sports teams start their practice, we offer food service for the students coming during the practice. So we think that's very exciting to be able to offer that. So I certainly applaud Rob Shaheen and his food service crew. They're doing a very nice job in offering services for our students. So that completes my report. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, school committee reports, and at this time, there are none. And then, is there any other business not reasonably anticipated prior to the posting of this meeting? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Thank you very much.